Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education. It is Thursday, December 4th, 7:00 PM. If we could all pleading stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before I pass it over to Dr. Wallach for tonight's meeting, she is graciously sitting in for Dr. Craw, who had a procedure, an Achilles procedure. He's doing great and he contacted Dancing With The Stars. He will be ready for next season. So he's fine, he'll be back in the saddle on Monday. He's recuperating and on that note, I'll pass it over to Dr. Wallach.
Can you do the pink? It's election of new Board of Chair.
What's that? I know.
I'm gonna...
Oh, you're gonna...
Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening to everyone. So with this being the first meeting of our new board, we do open with the nomination and appointment of our Board of Education officers. So at this time, I will begin the process. First calling for nominations for the position of Board of Education Chair.
I nominate Don Chippulum.
I second.
I second, okay.
Nomination's only seconds.
Okay.
We will take them.
All right. There's the third too.
Two and a half. Two seconds late.
Well, I think first, are there any other nominations?
No.
No? Don want to make a motion to close the nominations?
I'll make a motion to close the nominations.
Seconds. Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So, is no other nominations? I guess it'd be discussion first? Is there any discussion?
Uh-uh.
Then Suzanne, can we call the vote?
Call the vote.
Oh, all those in favor?
Yes. You voted yourself.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's very nice.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And now I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Now, at this point, we'd like to take nominations for the Vice Chair.
I nominate Samantha.
What, are you twins?
We said it like great instinct.
Okay.
Oh, come on.
Any other, any other nominations? Okay. I'd like to close that and can we vote? All in favor?
We have to vote to close it?
You have to vote to close it.
Vote to close it.
A second to vote to close it?
A second.
Robert rules the extra circuit.
I do.
Greg. Oh, Dom.
Dom did.
Chair.
All right. All in favor?
All in favor of closing.
Aye.
And all in favor of Samantha? You're voting for yourself.
I will.
All right. Congratulations Samantha.
Welcome back Samantha.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Okay. Off to the races. Approval of the... Oh, sorry. Uh, the Secretary. I'm trying to just...
I'd like to nominate Kim and Sancha, but I know she's not here, but...
Yep. She doesn't have to be there.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
I'll second Kim's.
Okay. We don't need a second.
We don't need a second.
Close the nominations.
I'll second then. Okay. All, you want us to vote for closing?
Closing.
Closing.
Okay.
Right.
All in favor?
All in favor. Okay. All favor of Kim being Secretary. Unanimous. Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Holds a place. Let's move forward. Thank you. Um, approval of the minutes from November 6th, 2025, regular meeting.
Have a hotel.
We good with that?
We're good.
Yep. Okay. That's approved. Approval of tonight's agenda? Yes?
Yes. Good.
Okay. Real good. Public participation. If you're a member of the public and you'd like to comment, we ask that you step to the podium, keep your comments civil, keep them to no more than three minutes, state your full name and your street name, not your street address. Please, anyone like to go up and speak, be my guest.
My name's Eric Alvedi. I live at five minute drive from Fairfield, obviously. And I sent a note to all of you on this week... Well, excuse me, not all of you, just the board of users on the... I'd like to approach you just to make sure all of you have received this email. Because I sent a lot of information today and I'm not going to go over every single line of this email. Not even really kind of reference all the points of view. But I do want to make sure you have the ability to read it.
Thank you.
Now, I've had the experience of naming two fields here in Fairfield. John John Penegas Field in 2017 and Marty Morgan Field in 2021. And when I named the fields, I almost felt that that was going to be the end kind of the story of that field. And I realized it was just the beginning. I realized it was just the beginning because so many things came afterwards. I saw acts of kindness. I saw how the students' behavior changed in a positive way. And I realized that the field wasn't just a field anymore. It became a special place. And in this email that I sent to you, I highlighted six specific examples of when the Glantag gave us a $20,000 donation in terms of the logo to specific changes in student behavior. Now, those aren't only the examples that I have. And I want to share with you a, I consider a funny story because funny stories tend to resonate with people. When both fields were named, Fred Tesser, who happens to be a member of the Park and Rec at that timeframe and a very respected member of the community, he decided, he saw those fields being named and he wanted to contribute. And he set off in need for bleachers on both those fields. So he decided he's going to try to find some bleachers to be able to donate to the community. And he happened to find a good price for these bleachers on the nearby state of Ohio. And he decided to drive out to Ohio with the truck. John Hodge, in the kindness of his heart, also joined him. And they went out to Ohio to go get these bleachers. And when they found out, they drove 12 hours out there going to get the bleachers. Guy who was selling the bleachers went down to the bottom of stairs, all the way into the back of the school, said, "Here's the bleachers." And he's like, "How am I going to get these out of here?" Well, that's your problem. You need to go take them out piece by piece by piece. So they spent eight hours there doing that. Put it in the truck, drove 12 hours back. They drive through the night, they haven't slept for two days. They drop it in the, on the, where the bus lot is today. Literally came into the, they must have been in the middle of the night, came in, probably just lifted their truck as they were driving in and just spread all the pieces all over the, all over the place. I got a call that morning, next morning, said, "Eric, you gotta get the boys up here. Get the team up here. We need to assemble some bleachers." And it was chaos. Nuts, bolts, places all over the place, but we did it. And when I think of that story, I think some of our members of our community are nuts. Nuts to drive all the way out there and do that. But that's what this inspires. Naming a field inspires positive acts to help the community. And that's what we're trying to do here. Pat, gotta give him credit, graduate class of '88, he's doing a selfless act here. He recognizes that the Garbowski family has done so much for this community. And, and I truly believe if you support naming this field, that will not be the last time you've heard of, of a kind act going on that field. I'm sure there's going to be plenty more. And hopefully there will be, you know, even more, I call it idiotic acts, like, like the Fred Testers of the world that they've done. Because this is what this community is built on. So I, with that said, I am going to conclude with, I sent you this long email. I obviously have experience with prior boards, prior superintendents to get this approved. Obviously, there's some hesitation. I didn't get as much hesit, you know, much pushback when I was doing it, the prior ones. Clearly, you guys have some hesitation. I'm now asking you, what's your concerns? How can I help you get this, move this forward? Do I please, I ask you for questions?
We can answer your questions now. It's your comments and we don't do a back and forth.
Then, then I conclude. I hope, I hope that the kindness acts and the changes in student behavior influence you to support the naming of Garbowski Field. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Frank Rizzo from Columbia Drive, New Fairfield. So I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I'm not as prepared as Eric with a 27-page email, but that was a great job. I'll try to follow it best I can. I found out about two hours ago from Pat and left work to do this just because I felt so strongly about it. I've lived in New Fairfield since 1978. Played baseball here, coached baseball here. I was a JV coach in 1990. I was still in college at the time. And I know what the baseball program was like before the Garbowski family and after the Garbowski family. I also own All-Star Battery Range in Brookfield, Connecticut for the last 35 years. Should have thrown that out there. So baseball's been my life, 365 days a year for the last literally 35 years. Lived in New Fairfield for 47 years. And I know what it was like here, how the fields were, how the coaching was. I was laughing today when I told Pat, like, I coached baseball in 1990, JV. I didn't continue. I think I was probably eventually kind of heading towards maybe getting that varsity job. But we opened All-Star the next year, started training baseball full-time. I was very underqualified, probably at 21-years-old, still a senior in college, to be coaching JV baseball. I see what Joe has done. So I really think it's the culture change that they brought and it's not just Joe. I know me and Pat were going over it and I probably know, I named it pretty good to them today, like what coaches from '76 on. I think I had most of the years right. I would be like a baseball historian in New Fairfield, I think, knowing the coaches and the players of the year and stuff like that. And it's not just about Joe. I think that's the big thing. I know Joe's the current coach. He's been here, I think, 18 years. Coach Mike Garbowski, who's probably not in the best of health right now, has probably been closer to 30 years as an assistant. He's been all Joe's years and all Jeff Castaldi's, 11 years. Probably the lowest on the totem pole for why they deserve it. And I know there's probably, a lot of fields can be named after a lot of coaches. Again, I think it's the whole family thing. Joe was a three-time All-State player at New Fairfield. Joe's brother, Mike Garbowski Jr., was a two-time All-State baseball player at New Fairfield. Matt Garbowski was a two-time All-Sta-, uh, All-State baseball player at New Fairfield. Because he missed his junior year for COVID, he would easily had a third All-State year. Then Joe's youngest son, Kyle, was also a two-time. So they've had nine All-State awards between the family. And I was telling Pat, funny thing is that's probably the 20th reason their baseball talent, why I think the field should be named Garbowski Field. I've never seen a coach and any, and I'm a good friend of Marty Morgan. I'd put him right up there with Marty Morgan, which I think is a compliment. They're probably the only two people I know that, it's not just the years, it's what they're doing. If any of you guys have ever been up to the field or really looked at the field, it's the nicest baseball field around. And it's not, the guys at the school are great, but Joe's out there cutting that lawn three to four times a week himself. So just want to conclude again, the talent that the whole family had is great. The 18 years of Joe's coaching is above and beyond what, it might have been like two other coaches in the history in New Fairfield that have done their sport that long, including Marty. But it's the fact of the whole family, the, the time and effort they put in, above and beyond. As I said, the culture change, knowing how serious baseball is taking the town, how many kids get an opportunity to go play in college or go to college because of baseball and come back and become part of the family that Joe's created there, all the extra time they do. So just wanted to put my two cents in. I couldn't think of anyone more deserving. I understand you guys probably need parameters. You probably need strict parameters for how, you know, how you could name a field after someone. I couldn't imagine over the next 20, 30 years, how you're going to find a family that's put in 30 years, not counting their playing careers and the hundreds, probably thousands of hours extra that Joe has put into that field and those boys. And that he's still, his kids are all in college or out of college and that he's still on the board for New Fairfield Baseball, still putting his time, growing the future. for New Fairfield Baseball, still putting his time, growing the future of the sport, even though he'll probably be long gone from coaching by the time those five-year-olds are there. So, just wanted to uh, address you guys, and thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
How you doing? My name is Larry Rocomo, I live on Dale Road. For me, I, I, I think this one's kind of a no-brainer. You have someone, Joe and his father, who, as Frank said, have been a part of New Fairfield High School baseball for over forty years. I was playing baseball at New Milford High School in nineteen ninety-eight, and Mike was coaching on the other side. And I remember hearing about Joe, he was a little bit older than me, but I remember hearing about him as a player and, you know, I won't go over his accolades, you know, Frank did, but um, so to, to be in this town and be a part of that program, him, his father, for forty-plus years, and maybe his kids after, when Joe decides to move on, I think is something that you don't really see. There's a lot of fields named after people. I grew up in New Milford, I lived in Danbury for the last few years, and it's a lot of fields named after people that haven't put that kind of time in, and haven't put that kind of effort in what I've seen now in two years, in what he does for that field, and all the work that's put into that field. We've done, we've done a lot of events in the last couple of years, and I coach my son, and um, we go to college fields that aren't in the shape that New Fairfield High School is. And that's because of Joe. You know, sure, you can give the kids some credit too, you know, they're staying after and helping, but um, I think there's something to be said for that. For me personally, uh, I've raised my son since he was a baby, and um, we lived in Danbury, and seventh, eighth grade, we started talking. Baseball's a huge part of our life, um, probably to the point of insanity, sometimes, these guys know. I kind of, you know, as far as high school, you know, my son's very articulate and very, always been very mature, and I've let him have a say in a lot of things that he does. And even as a little kid, um, I've tried not to be like this dictator, like, hey, you're going to do this because I'm dad, and so I kind of let him have a say in eighth grade, and he was training at All-Star, where Joe was a big part of the program, and my son's a catcher, Joe was a catcher. So when it got to eighth grade, it was, alright, do we, you want to go to Danbury High School? We were living in Danbury at the time. Want to go to Immaculate? I'll write the check for Immaculate. You want to go to New Fairfield, you have some ties there, you have a relationship with Joe. For me, it didn't really matter, you know, I travel for work and I'll live wherever, but in talking, a lot of our conversation, not everything, our whole world isn't just baseball, believe it or not. But um, it was a lot of our conversation, and ultimately, my son wanted to come to New Fairfield, and wanted to play for Joe, and we didn't know Joe, and my son didn't know Joe, but didn't know that he was a catcher, and had done some stuff with him at All-Star, but really felt that that was going to be the next step to propel him to where he wants to go and play in college. And so we made the decision to move to New Fairfield and buy a house, and here he is, he's a junior now, and um, I have no regrets. I think Joe has been fantastic and fair, and um, you know, it's tough being a head coach, these guys know, I know. You get a lot of criticism, a lot of critiques, and I think he handles it in the best way possible, and always has an open door, and has been there, you know, I, I've, I've tried to let my son make his own way in the world, um, at the high school, and on the New Fairfield varsity team. But the one, two times I've needed to talk to Joe, he was nothing but forthright and straightforward, and that's all I could ask for. And as Frank said, it, it really is a program. That was the first thing I noticed when I sat in that meeting. Cares and treats it like a program, and that's what I wanted for, for my son. And um, so, you know, it was a decision that um, that he was a big part of and making, he didn't know it at the time, but um, and we uh, one thousand percent are happy with the decision he made. He could have went to Danbury High School, he could have went to Immaculate, he probably would have been the starting catcher as a freshman. But wanted to come here and compete and play for Joe, and hopefully help him get him into college, and that's where he's headed. So, I think that and um, and the combin- and just like I talked about with the amount of work that he does on the field that no other town is doing, no other, I don't know, than any other town in the state is doing. And then the forty years in the family, I, I just think it's a no-brainer. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening, uh, thank you for your time, uh, Pat Toth, Six on Swept. I've been here many times, you guys are probably sick of seeing me. But they want a public comment, I'm bringing a public comment, and that right there, I don't know what to say. The guy bought a house in New Fairfield, when he could have went to New, Danbury and had his kid start as catcher. But he, you know, he didn't start as a catcher here, and he stuck with it, and maybe now he will be, but the guy bought a house near Fairfield. You know, uh, I don't want to keep bringing people here every single week, I can keep bringing, I don't want to like take up your time and bring public people every single week, so I think this is pretty powerful stuff. So hopefully you guys can speak amongst yourselves, and, and hopefully we can get this done, but I thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, um, did you want to read that comment, or you want to do that?
Could maybe summarize it?
There's one more, uh, another member of the community sent, sent us uh, an email and asked that we read it into um, into the meeting tonight, into the minutes, so, trying to find it, who was that, what was his name?
Ken Bennett. I sent you it today, this morning, eleven o'clock, something like that.
Who sent it?
Sent it to my working, Greg.
Alright, we'll find it, I'll read it at some point.
Okay, I was reading the second public.
Yeah.
I'll find it in the background.
Yeah. We'll, we'll read that letter into the minutes also. Appreciate all your comments, folks. So, quick report from me, um, I appreciate my fellow board members supporting me for another term as the chair. I, I, I think we have a cohesive board, we work together really well. Issues come up, right, issues like this, and we have to make decision, uh, decisions on what's best for the community. So, we'll work together and um, continue to move this district forward as we have um, under the, a great leadership of Dr. Crowe and Dr. Waller. So, so that's, that's what I have for tonight, so I thank the community for the, for the support and my colleagues here. And I will pass it over to you, Dr. Waller, for your report.
Well, Dr. Crowe and I both uh, hope that our students, our, our staff and our families all enjoyed a wonderful Thanksgiving. Right on cue, this week's weather has reminded us that the winter season is upon us. So, we are looking forward next to holiday concerts. Um, and just would encourage our, our families and communities to come out over the next few weeks. We have band, chorus, and orchestra concerts coming, and you know, the gift of music is, is wonderful this time of year, and I know our students have worked very hard to prepare for that. Tomorrow, we, I believe it's the high school chamber singers will be singing at the, the New Fairfield Library, and then we have concerts both the next two weeks and then into January. It's also the season for kindergarten registration, so for those families that have children born, born on or before September first of twenty twenty-one, registration has opened December first for kindergarten registration, that's on our website, or through the elementary school website. Um, and it's, it's helpful, um, if parents can do that promptly, because it assures that the family will have the invitation for their child to our K mini programs that happen um, as we're preparing for, for kindergarten. And then also for us as a district, it allows us to make sure that we have our sections and our staffing all in place to welcome those, those kindergartners. Um, and lastly, I did just want to share an update on our Anxious Generation discussion groups. We've held two sessions already, our third was scheduled for Tuesday, but due to the weather, we rescheduled that to this coming Monday evening, December eighth at six thirty, and that's for all pre-K through twelve families in the district. Our first two sessions were very collaborative conversations, um, there's already some themes that are coming forward, there's certainly some shared concern around the impact of, of the, the digital world and our, our children, whether it's devices, social media, cell phones, um, but also the impact in terms of wellness in this shift that we're seeing from what's been called a, a play-based childhood to a phone-based childhood. So, we were, we were hearing this desire from the community members and parents to continue to look at some of our policies um, with regard to cell phones, or with regard to the use of, of our devices in schools. Um, we're going to continue to also look at unstructured play, screen-free play, not only at recess, but even um, outside of school, how we can support that in the community. And, and the idea of building independence and responsibility as students are getting older. I think all of us recognize the reality that technology is a part of our, our world, and it's going to be a part of our children's future. Um, so we also were having conversations in these discussion groups around how we can make sure we're teaching children the skills to use technology effectively, balancing on-screen and off-screen time, and maintaining human, human connections as a vital part of, of being a part of the community. We also heard, which is interesting, from parents, the, the desire to connect with one another and support one another in navigating this, so that's another piece, they're, they're seeking some structures in the community for that. So, we're going to bring all of these themes back to a leadership team in the district, back to our Strategic Wellness Group with the additional comments that come in the discussion group on Monday evening, and then we'll hopefully be able to bring forward some, some recommendations based on those themes that we can discuss as a, as a district and, and also as a community.
Thank you, it's uh, interesting that parents are looking for support and looking for help because of um, what we're all noticing and the change in how our kids engage with one another, et cetera, et cetera, so. You know, the cat's out of the bag, and hopefully we can get kids back into uh, playing, in the playground, so to speak. Uh, we have the letter, I want to read it into the minutes, this is from um, Ken Bennett, the president of New Fairfield Baseball. Dear New Fairfield Board of Education, I'm writing in support of the naming of the Rebel Baseball Field in honor of Rebel coaches Mike and Joe Garbowski. As a coach, parent, and a New Fairfield baseball president, I have witnessed firsthand the profound positive impact both coaches have had on our athletes and the entire New Fairfield community for over thirty-two years. Coach Mike and Joe have not only fostered a winning mentality, but also instilled in valuable life lessons in sportsmanship, dedication, and perseverance. They consistently went above and beyond, mentoring countless players and making a lasting difference in their lives, both on and off the field. Naming the field after these coaches would be a fitting tribute to them, as they have given so much to our community. It would serve as a permanent reminder of their contributions and inspire future generations of athletes to embody the same spirit of excellence and integrity. I would welcome the opportunity to discuss this proposal further and provide any additional information you may require. Thank you for your time and consideration of this important matter, sincerely, uh, Ken Bennett, President of New Fairfield Baseball. So that's read into the minutes. Very good. Thanks for passing that over, um, we are up to Student Representatives Report. Ella and Haley, Ella first, who's your senior?
Well, hi, so we have a lot of announcements today, it's two pages, so we'll get right on it. Last month, on the twenty-first, there was an onsite admissions day for Western Connecticut State University, so congratulations to all the seniors who were accepted. Um, on the third of this month was the National Honor Society Blood Drive, and there will be another one in March. Um, some senior class announcements, on the ninth, there's an onsite decision day for Connecticut State Community College at Nogtuck Valley. Seniors who signed up for this event can meet directly with admissions representatives in the College and Career Center, and can possibly get same-day admission decisions, so good luck. Um, the yearbook is currently on sale, it's a hundred dollars until January first. Family ads for seniors and business ads can be purchased between now and January ninth, and there are several size options available at different price points. Seniors must select their yearbook photo via Legacy by the nineteenth. Um, the post-graduation committee is creating a gratitude wall. If you send kind, meaningful messages to, you can send kind, meaningful messages to friends, classmates, or staff members for three dollars for one message, or five dollars for two. Proceeds will go to help families of graduates by reducing, by reducing the cost of post-graduation celebrations, and all the messages will be displayed on the TV screens in school. Um, some other news, on the fifth, a small group of students, including me, will be attending the Model UN Conference in Hartford, and this will be the first time in several years that anyone from our school has gone to a Model UN conference. On the eleventh, there's early dismissal for students. On the fifteenth, there will be auditions for the Spring Musical, which will be the Addams Family. Um, on the eighth of January, it's the Second Annual Alumni Return Day. From the fifteenth to the twenty-first of January is roughly when we will be having our midterms. And on the twenty-third of January, quarter two will end. And then just a general announcement, the National Honor Society is currently accepting requests for peer tutoring, and this is for all levels of math, biology, physics, chemistry, English, social studies, and any homework or study skills assistance that anyone might need.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So just a quick few reminders. Previously, throughout November, December, on November eleventh, we had our Veterans Day Assembly. This was organized by several seniors and juniors, as well as Miss Su Chaplow, to bring in a US military member as a guest. This was guest speaker, Tom McGurn, who shared his very interesting stories of his service and called our students to active citizenship. On November seventeenth, we had our Student Spanish Ridgefield Playhouse to perform um, of ballet Hispanico. And also on November seventeenth, we had our Athletics Fall Signing Event, so we want to give a congratulations to all the students, athletes who participated in the official signing for the ceremony. And on November twenty-first, there was our DECA Powderpuff Game. Uh, as known, this was our junior versus seniors' girl um, Powderpuff to co- co-moderate uh, Thomas Ford and raise money for Scholarship Forty-two. And DECA also had its Thanksgiving Food Drive, and we raised six hundred eight food and personal care items that were collected and donated. Now for our upcoming events in December and January, we have an update on our Was- Washington DC trip for the juniors. So Payment Two is one hundred fifty dollars, due by Friday, February nineteenth, and Payment Three is a hundred dollars, due by uh, what was I saying? Friday, January ninth, and all accounts must be paid in full by February second. Dates to remember, uh, like said about our concerts, December tenth, we have our Chamber Singers Wind Ensemble and Jazz Band. This is seven PM in the High School Theater, as well as December eighteenth is our Strings Concert, also seven PM in the High School Theater. And December twenty-third, this is a early dismissal, following by the break, which is a return on Monday, uh, January fifth. And January fourteenth, we have our concert, also seven PM in the High School, for our Concert Choir and Symphony Band. And another general mi- reminder is that DECA is sponsoring a gift tree eh, this month in December, supporting two local families. The tree is located in room one thirteen, installs tags left for anyone interested in donating. And if you are, the gift should be returned to Ms. McDermott by December twelfth, unwrapped, because our DECA students are going to be wrapping them. So that's it, with a lot of exciting dates, thank you.
A lot going on. Thank you both. Okay, um, committee reports, curriculum. I stood in at the curriculum meeting, the subcommittee meeting, and just some, some updates on it. Uh, there was a social studies curriculum update, which discussed study and research, design, which is where we are now in the process. Implementation comes next, and then it's monitored, reviewed, revised. Uh, so in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, new state standards were established. History, geography, economics, and civics are the areas. Standards are about content and skills, and um, it's really interesting to see how this is scaffolded year after year. I think a key takeaway for me was the, the importance of linking history to contemporary issues. You know, that old saying, history repeats itself. I think we, as a society, need to do a better job of teaching our young people about history. Because it's, sometimes you, you wonder how kids don't know about things that have happened in our past. I'm not speaking about here in Fairfield, in other districts, we, we do a good job here. But um, I think there's nothing more valuable than understanding history. And a, a note to the curriculum leaders who are the drivers, who make this happen. And then, you know, the process for curriculum is a five-year curriculum design map, and um, under the leadership of the person to my left, um, this is a tremendous undertaking, and it is um, showing excellent results, so congratulations for everything that's happening in that. And then you'll, you'll be speaking on EduPlanet?
I will.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have for curriculum, then we have policy, Samantha?
Policy met on November seventeenth. Um, we spent a good part of the evening having a conversation about Policy Seven Thousand, which is the concepts and roles in planning for educational facilities, which has to do with the fields. What was initially presented, because we had asked for it, was a process by which we would evaluate how we were going to do this because we have nothing in place. But what was put forward, at least as a first draft, was so drawn out and labor-intensive for a lot of people involved that we just felt, and we told the superintendent that we thought it needed to be pared down to something that was more workable. So, we ended up tabling it because we're waiting for a new draft of a more simplified process to come forward. And then, we also, at that time, it was presented to us as a possible option to be considered, that we consider a monument, which we will be discussing later this evening. But that was put forward to the full board for conversation. And I'm assuming that will be brought up this evening. And after that, we had to look at bylaws ninety-three eleven, ninety-three twelve, and ninety-three thirteen, simply because this new schedule that we're on for regular board meetings is going to render it pretty much impossible for us to be able to pass anything on three readings. It's just, if we're only meeting once a month for a majority of months, three readings would mean it would take us roughly six months to get a policy through. So, these are basically bylaws that are going to get amended so that we are not required to go through three readings anymore before we adopt a policy. And that was it.
Okay. Thanks. Special ed ad hoc.
I'm actually going to defer to Kathy. I can't read my own handwriting. That's how bad it is.
So, she's going to have to jump in in case I get it wrong, and I apologize if I say anything wrong. So, we met tonight, and we talked about some great stuff that's happening for special ed. We talked about structured literacy and how we have great continuity now in the tools that we're using. So, we're using Ortman-Gillingham, did I say that right? Wilson and Hagerty. But the nice part is, is that they transition across the grade. So, they're going from, you know, the younger grades all the way up to the high school, which is something that we haven't had in the past. So, it was super encouraging to hear that, that it's going across all the levels. And really what that stuff is doing is providing direct structure to those kids that need it, but then they have options. So, they can, we can meet the chi- the children where they are, which is something we haven't been able to do in the past. So, it's really, it's fantastic. We also talked about a thing called Child Find, and this is actually a requirement for the district from the state that we have to locate and evaluate every child in the district from birth to twenty-two to see if they need services. And it's a kind of a cumbersome process, but it's also, you want to be able to provide information to parents so that they know if the child potentially has something, you know, or, I didn't mean to say it that way, if, if they need to address something. So, to help with that, the special ed team is building a website. And on that website, they're going to house all the information that parents might need and any kind of resources. So, that was great to hear. And then, they are, they held a couple of parent events, and there's a couple more coming up. So, one of them was on November eighteenth, and that was the Family Resource Center Open House, and that was more for parents to learn about the ELC process, but also about what's offered in the district. And they had a great turnout for that. And on February eighteenth, they're going to have an info night on transitions. So, that's not only transitions like after you graduate from high school, but it's also transitions, how do we handle transitioning from school to school, which, once again, is something we haven't had in the past. So, it's fantastic that we're starting to think about how do we help these kids move from school to school. And, and in that same parent coffee, they'll also try to help them understand the, oh, no, and then there's two parent coff- coffees coming, sorry. One on January twenty-eighth to understand the IEP process and parent educator support, and then on May twenty-first to discuss all the assistive technology that we do have in the district to support our special ed children. And then the other cool thing we talked about was, we talked about how, with strides, how we have children that are actually adults that are now working at different places around the area. And we have people at Lesser Evil, we have them at nursing homes, we have Ice Fring, Johnny's, Biscotti's, and other places, which is really nice. So, what did I forget?
That great.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. It's very promising.
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah. So, now we have liaison reports, and we have Board of Finance, and Greg will be reporting for ed.
Okay. So, the Board of Finance met on Wednesday, November nineteenth, in the Senior Center. The first order of business was to elect a new chairman. Rick Regan nominated Wes Marsh. Thora nominated John Arizzi. Vote was three to three. Later on in, in the meeting, they revisited it, and Wes Marsh was voted as the new chair six, six unanimously. Town Treasurer Terry Freeman reviewed most of the recent draft of the proposed medical funding policy. She noted that the reserve was higher than necessary and that the funds cannot be transferred to, for another purpose. As they moved along, John Arizzi mentioned, made it a motion to adopt the medical reserve policy with the proposed changes without the memorandum, which would move funding requirement to eighty percent, surplus to sixty percent. Later on, that motion was, was amended to change the funding requirement to, from sixty percent to fifty-five percent, but the motion passed six-nothing. New business, as I mentioned, they revisited the vote, and Wes was voted. It's a six, six-nothing. They also made a motion to revisit a Board of Ed liaison, which is nice, which they're going to revisit that at the next meeting. They approved their calendars for meetings. Adam Lawrence, medical update, Adam Lawrence spoke of the trial for an updated format for the medical reserve report that looks at a projection-based approach instead of just the last twelve months. Approximately three million had been transferred into the medical reserve out of the eight-point three million that had been budgeted. Employee contributions of three hundred seventy-two thousand plus some interest, which gives the total revenue approximately three-point-three million, and claims were trending slightly less than budgeted. So, they were happy about that. Current year revenue update, the tax collection for the prior year looks very, very positive. Wes noted that the interest income is also higher than, than budgeted, and thanked Town Treasurer Terry Freeman for hard work. The available cap, a balance of the cap and non was one point nine, almost two million, one point nine, one million nine hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-two. And that was pretty much it. Jessica Sanchez, the end, thanks Thora for her service as chairman as, as Wes was elected as the chair.
Okay. Let's throw that. Park and Recs, Greg?
Park and Rec met on Monday, November tenth. The chairman's report, the snack shack at the town beach needs to be demolished. Permission's needed from First Light. That's going to be followed up on by Linda Lull. The fire marshal had requested that fire extinguishers, exit lights, and emergency lights be installed at the concession stand at Rebel Turf. There was discussion who's responsible for that, whether it be First Select or the superintendent of schools, which will be followed up for a discussion. There was brief discussion around the day camp compensation for employees with the minimum wage going up. Boat slip prices right now are eighteen-twenty-two. There was a discussion what the price would be for next summer. Linda Lull is going to follow up with other neighboring marinas and get their prices. Letters for boat slips are scheduled to go out in January. Jim Keller approved the expenditure of thirty-eight hundred for the fencel on the first baseline at Memorial Field, softball field. And the commission discussed requested capital budgets for twenty-six, twenty-seven, which included demolition of the snack shack, rebuilding the snack shack, playground, the beach, and the basketball courts of the high school. It was noted that any repairs to the boat docks would be taken out from the boat dock replacement fund.
Very good. Thank you. All right. We are up to information items, and the first one is New Fairfield High School Consolidated School Building Project update. Carrie?
Thank you. I have three very quick updates. Propagating issue is ongoing. Colliers in the PBC is working with Legal on next steps, so there's more to come on that. The bus lot is ready to go to planning later in the month. It'll go to public meeting in January if that goes well, and then we'll go out to bid in the spring. The last thing I want to talk about, the sun shades at the elementary school, they're ready to go up in the spring. They're all installed and ready to go, and I just want to say a big thank you to Apex and the PTO for all their support and help getting this project done. It's been a long time coming, I think, three years. So, they're up, and we'll have some shade out there for the kids.
Good.
That's for like the main playground areas?
Yeah, there's really no shade out there, so the PTO generously donated really big shades so the kids can get some cover. So, it's good.
Nice, cool.
Any questions on any of them?
No, the first one, there will be, there will be questions for that once we have more information, right?
Yeah, and I'm happy to share the letter. The, the vendor did respond. So, and it's all kind of what we thought, you know, no one's really taking accountability. So, we're just working, yeah. So, we're working with Legal to see what our next steps are.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, EduPlanet launch.
So, you might recall at some of the curriculum presentations, I've referenced EduPlanet as a platform that we're using with our curriculum leadership team to design and build our curriculum, and it, that's how it's available to our staff. So, it's a shared access, there's clarity there for them. But it also has a public-facing page and platform, and we are excited that we are ready now to launch that public-facing component. So, I wanted to just walk through a brief tour of what that looks like, how it will appear on our website, so that families in the community will be able to access the curriculum blueprint, as we call it, get feedback from the board tonight, and then we'll finish with some edits with the leadership team this month and have it ready to be live on the week of January fifth. So, let me click through here. This is our, our NFPS website, and just to indicate where this curriculum blueprint will live, it will live on the Teaching and Learning page. So, depending on the resolution of your, your screen, it might be on that top bar, or it might be that you need to click on that more dropdown menu, and then you go to the Teaching and Learning page. We have updated that a bit as well, given it a little bit of a fresher look. We've increased the information that's related to our vision of the learner there, and also included a button that you see the NFPS curriculum blueprint. So, that's one way that when it's live, you'll be able to click there. And then over here on the side, there's a curriculum toolbar also that will bring you to our curriculum page with another opportunity there to link to the blueprint. And once you link there with the blueprint, this is what our curriculum blueprint will look, or does look like. It's not live yet, but I'm showing you sort of the live model of it. Each of these tiles is for a specific subject area. If you click on any of these, it opens up a collection of the grade levels that we've built out. Every discipline has what's called its overview. These are philosophy statements, transfer goals that have been written K-12. So, this is, is where we've really looked at what's our, our vision in that discipline for our learners when they leave us. And then I'm going to need my glasses in just a sec here, but I keep trying. So, if I go, and I'll click on a, one sec, I'll click on a grade. Here's third grade for math for every discipline. And let me see how I can scroll up and down on this.
Probably if you put it on the paper.
There we go. So, what you see is a, a description of the course. I'm going to go back up for a sec. That's generally for the year, what that course will entail, the priority skills for students at that grade level. In this case, for math courses, we have some additional documents that we know parents often are asking about for elementary level. You see a link here to a resource that describes our basic fact expectations for each grade level. At the six-twelve level, there's a progression of our courses and the criteria for those accelerated math courses that parents often are wondering about. And then for those curriculum areas where the curriculum's implemented through units of study, each of the units have a description here. And a parent, a third grader, would know then the sequence of the units that their child's working in over the course of the year and be able to see a brief description of that. For some of our curriculum areas that have gone through that curriculum renewal process, so for instance, science, if I go back to a tile here, click, and I go over to science, and I click on, let's say, ninth grade here, and here you see that course description, you see the units, but what you see here are that our units have been designed with the storyboard images that have been built out, and there's an additional view button for each unit, and that will click over to a more in-depth map of the standards, the understandings, and the very specific knowledge and skills for each unit that's been articulated. So, this is the, the level of work that our instructional leaders are doing when they're building out curriculum, and this way it's available to families so that they understand what it is that their child's learning. We've done this, you know, as it's part of that curriculum renewal process. So, each discipline is in a different place in terms of building out their curriculum, but over time, you'll see this platform being added to and revised and edited and updated. But we are excited to, to launch it so that families have access, the public will have access, interested first in, in feedback from the board. And then, you know, we'll be meeting with the leadership team next week where they'll be making some final edits and adjustments, continuing to update with content as the year goes on, and particularly when we're engaged in summer curriculum work, they'll be putting that work on the site as well. But, you know, to, to be ready to launch this on January, week of January fifth to the families.
Can we get a copy of this, or, because it didn't come through as an attachment on the agenda?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, well, you said you'd be interested in feedback. I can't, yeah, it's too far away right now. I'd like to take a look at it.
We can give you the, the link so that you can sort of click around yourself and see the different levels of.
I think it's fantastic.
So, the age-old question, um, what'd you learn in school today? A parent can know right away what you should be learning in that course by, instead of scrolling on reels, uh, taking a look at this and identifying what their kids need to know and should know. I, I, I think this is a game changer in terms of transparency and what's happening in our district, and it's a long time coming. We've said that before, but we appreciate this work and look forward to the launch.
I think it would help with recruitment as well. Because if I was a staff, if I was looking to come for a job and I found this and I knew exactly, as a teacher, and I knew exactly, and I could see it, I'd be like, oh, they're buttoned up, like, they know what they're doing. Oh, I can teach it. Oh, I know how to do that. Like, to me, that would be huge.
Years ago, no curriculum, if you recall, and now, like, top-notch curriculum is a game changer.
Sure. So, if you're going to move to this area, you're looking at like different websites, Brookfield, Danbury, and like, and if you pull this up, and now you can go and see it.
It's huge.
It's, it's good. Dr. Wall, will it also have dates on there? So, for example, if it's November of what, a year? Like, that's timeframe should be in that section? I know it's not going to be exact this year, but...
We've put it more just in sequence right now, because there are times where it flexes a bit, but it will be in the, the sequence, sort of scope and sequence is typically the term that we use for that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
It's fantastic.
Yeah, very nice. Thanks for sharing that.
We'll get the link out to everyone.
Appreciate that.
Explore it yourself.
So, the next information item is, is the baseball field recognition. I just want to say I appreciate the comments we heard tonight. I think hearing from the community is invaluable when we make decisions. So, the superintendent shared with us, and every board member should have a document that identifies what our options are for this naming request. And we won't take action tonight. We don't have a full board here. We're going to digest what our options are, and at our next meeting, which the date is the seventeenth, I think? Eighteenth? We'll make a decision by the...
It's a virtual meeting. It's a virtual.
Okay, so, we'll make a decision virtually on our next, what, what we're going to do in terms of naming. So, the options are, just so we're aware, and then, you know, this is in, you know, in full transparency, we have the Hall of Honor nomination is an option, and Policy Seven Thousand D three designates the Hall of Honor as the preferred form to honor individuals and groups. Second option is naming the field after Mike Garbowski, and the third option is to prove, to approve a recognition plaque. So, these are the three options. We're going to make a decision on one of those three, and whatever the decision is, you know, we, we expect everyone to respect that decision, and we'll make the decision we think is best. And again, we appreciate everyone's comments, and we'll, we'll, we'll have that. I want the full board to be able to review this, and I expect the full board to vote on this at our next meeting. Okay? So, next item is we have Board of Ed policy, second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second reading on Policy Thirteen Twenty-One Point Two, Public Videotaping of Educational Activity. And we have first readings on all the bylaws that I previously mentioned, by law ninety-three eleven, which is formulation, adoption, amendment of policies, by law ninety-three twelve, which is, has the same title, and by law ninety-three thirteen, which also has the same title.
Okay, thanks. Action on personnel report.
I'll make a motion to the full board to approve the personnel report of, what's the date?
Uh, December first.
December first, as recommended by the administration.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Board of Ed, twenty-twenty-six regular meeting dates.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the twenty-twenty-six Board of Education regular and DOE subcommittee meeting dates as presented or amended.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Again, unanimous. NFEA retirement incentive.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the full board approval to award the retirement settlement bonus part Article forty-eight for those eligible teachers who by Monday, February two, twenty-twenty-six tender their designation to be effective at the end of the school year.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? No?
We did this every year.
Yeah, I know, just wanted to see if there's a discussion.
Same old, same old.
Well, maybe it's a question. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we're back to public participation. Any member of the public who would like to speak? You have an opportunity, limit your comments to three minutes, and please be civil. Future agenda items.
I don't know if it's an agenda item, but I had a question or an discussion. I really enjoyed going to that special ed meeting and, 'cause I've never went to one, so that was the first one that I went to.
Okay.
I was wondering if it would be super valuable, though, to maybe either move it to Zoom or end or record it in some manner, because I thought there was a lot of really good information, and I think it would benefit parents to see how, even how that team's interacting. Like, her team is fantastic, and the way that they were interacting with each other.
I had mentioned that at the beginning when we first brought that back together, because I thought that a lot of the parents that might actually want to participate, they might have childcare issues where they can't be there, so, but because of when we scheduled it, which is right before an in-person meeting every time it meets, it doesn't meet every month, it meets, what is it? Is it every two, every three?
I know, but I think there's a way that we could figure out to do it at least.
We're like quarterly or every two, yeah.
I just, I would like to...
Four times a year?
Yeah. But if we could record it.
Oh, there you go.
I just, I think, I found it su, I don't, I found it super informative, I found it super encouraging, I also think it might help the student budget process, just saying. I just, I was, I was super impressed, I wish I'd gone to Marvel. And I just, I think that, I think it'd be a benefit, probably for the business one too.
Well, I mean, I know we voted on the calendar already, I don't know if there's another day we could have it on or we could have it virtually instead, because you can't have it, if you're gonna have it virtually, you can kind of have it whenever you want, but...
Right.
Yeah. I don't know, I just...
All right, well, let's something to ponder, to figure out if we can make it happen, right? 'Cause it's, it makes sense, 'cause you give access to more people.
I think we'd give access to a lot more people, so.
Yeah.
Should not approve.
Okay.
I know, I thought about it, I was like, should I say something?
Anything else?
No, I was just saying, should we not approve the calendar then if we're, no.
We already did.
All right, it's done.
Well, you know, here's a thought, Kathy, since we have to redo the committees anyway, you might wanna sit on that committee.
Yeah, we'll be doing that by the next meeting, so that'll be confirmed.
Just putting that out there.
Okay, anything else? Any other items board members want to potentially see in an agenda? Okay, board member comments?
I'll make some comments.
Sure.
Just to follow up on my baseball compadre friends. So, as in full transparency, you guys are aware, I'm on the board as well in baseball, and I just wanna take a time to really speak about how, everything they talked about, how it translates into the community, and more importantly, the program, the kids. So Joe keeps that field like Yankee Stadium, like we all talked about, how that translates to the younger field. So when I was first a coach, when they're little future stars, real, they're like five years old, you start getting pressured to like take care of the field and drag the field, and at first you're like, it's kind of a pain, and, but you just do it anyway, it's kind of like peer pressure. Then as you get older and move up the fields, and then you get to Tegmire, which is the field up at Consolidated, and that field's like immaculate, and all the coaches, by then you're proud to take care of that field. And after every game and before every game, it's line, and it's beautiful, and all the coaches, and all the people come here, they're like, man, this is such a beautiful place to play baseball. And the kids love it, it's a beautiful facility. Last year, we just upgraded the field, the fifty-ninety field, and, you know, it's the same is true, and you take real pride. When you're at Tegmire, the kids are too young to take care of the field, so just the parents, the coach, stood after the game. But last year, as kids are older, my kids are older now, it practices and all the boys, go get a rake and let's go get the field. So, the boys learn to take pride in it, the boys learn, it's, it's, it's an ownership, it's a pride thing, and it's, it's such a, it translates all the way down to the kids and the way that those programs impact in their lives. Secondly, the other thing that Joe's done in the community is he has all the boys come and get announced on the field before the games, for the national anthem, they run the field, and it's the kids' favorite day, they talk about it all the time. He also is responsible for putting forward the Cooperstown trip. He talks to kids who are in college, including his son and his friends, they'll tell you the best weekend their life they ever had was their week in Cooperstown. Literally last night, we just went last year, we were fortunate enough to go last year, literally last night, constantly, dad, I wish we were still in Cooperstown with my team, like the impact of the, on the kids, the program. And finally, so, two weekends ago, on a very cold Saturday morning, seven-thirty in the morning, there was like four or five fathers of us, we're all winterizing the field, things like that, taking all the mats down and covering everything up, and, you know, guess who's there? Joe Garbowski's there, and he's, doesn't have to be there, he's there, working all the fields, at Tegmire, the other field. When I, we used to take care of the field, I would tell him, he would text me, I'm like, Thursday night, he's like, when's your games this weekend? I'd be like, oh, they're like at noon on Saturday, I'm gonna go up to the field like seven-thirty or so and do the field. I got up to the field at seven-thirty on Saturday to do it, guess what? Joe's walking off the field, he did it already. He does that all the time, so, I can't be more supportive of naming the field, Garbowski Field. I think this flows from his father, who pretty much shut the bar, and even now to the point where his son, Matt, who just graduated UConn last year, and Kyle's going to Quinnipiac right now, you even ask, I would ask Matt to come to my practices one time, a couple times, work with my catchers, he would just show up, such a positive impact on the kids, the kids love him. So, the whole family, the impact, I think it's more than appropriate. It's nice to be recognized the other ways in terms of the wall of fame, they're already on there, I don't think that's appropriate. The plaque is a nice thing too, but the most appropriate, most appropriate, proper way, in my opinion, we've been intimately involved in the program for all these years, I think it's to name the field. It's such a nice field, people from all over come here, they know they're coming to an absolutely beautiful field to play, and the impact of the community and the students and the kids, it's gonna be, last for a long time, so. I hope that when we do discuss this further, that we give serious consideration to naming the field, Garbowski Field.
I wonder what, I wonder what you'll be voting. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Peggy.
Hi, yes, thank you, I'm happy to be on the Board of Ed again. I wanted to discuss and build on what Greg just said, because for many years, and Eric probably remembers this, we had to cancel games at the New Fairfield High School, the soccer field, because the officials would come, the drainage was so poor, the fields were unsafe, and bit by bit, the fields were developed so that our high school athletes could participate. And we have a very active baseball program and soccer program in town, and I, when I first heard about it, I thought, you know, six years ago, we asked the public to step up and support building new school buildings and take on a tremendous financial burden for a couple of years, as I was frequently reminded when I was on the Board of Finance, but I think that, you know, this is the public asking us to do something, as Greg said, as a recognition for somebody who gives above and beyond, and I think the town is very good at doing that. We look at people who have made a significant difference in the town, and very often it's people who have volunteered their time and expertise, so I would just agree with what Greg said about naming the field and building that goodwill and a partnership with the people in town.
Thanks, Peggy. Any other comments? I'll close it out, I, one, it's good to see you back on the board, Peggy.
Thank you.
So welcome, and, you know, again, we make all kinds of decisions, and, you know, we work on a lot of different things, and every decision we make does make everyone happy. So, we want everyone to understand, please respect the process and how we go about this and what we do and the decision we make ultimately, and you're right, I mean, the community does come together, and we, this is the type of community we have, and Peggy, to your point about the schools, when the schools, you know, the community came around because they realized how important these schools were.
Right.
And the results from these new schools are, you know, showing themselves. So, we're proud of our new schools, and those who weren't so proud are well, right? Overall, the decision was made, and we're not gonna relitigate that, but, you know,